items, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion allows to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Amen. I call the meeting Wednesday, November 9th of the planning commission in the quarter. We'll have rule calls.
Okay, Ms. Wiggins.
Right.
Mr. Kane. Mr. Jeff Robinson. Mr. Walter Robinson.
Yep.
Ms. Chapman.
Right.
Ms. Barnes Rhodes.
Yeah.
Ms. Odom.
Yeah.
Mr. Anton. And Kim Wiley.
Yeah.
Ms. Wiley.
Okay. Excellent agenda's approval of the adjustment. You all have a agenda that's fairly short. Now a motion to approve it. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving junior agenda's printing say aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved. The minutes, the minutes, the last meeting, everybody had a copy. Does anybody have any corrections that is perceived? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as printed. Have a second?
Second.
Motion and second for the minutes, all in favor of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. I need a motion to go in a regular session to hear 2232 dash forward dash 2022.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Open? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're then in regular session. Mr. Pope, are you going to do the staff report?
The advocate Dominion Power has requested that the county planning commission review their county line solar project pursuant to Virginia Code 15.22232 to determine if the project is in substantial accord with the county's comprehensive plan. Before we present the staff report, Dominion has a short presentation they will give you of the project.
Okay, we're going to do that first.
We'll do that first and then we'll go into the staff report.
Okay. I guess Dominion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a board of four.
Mr. Green, our microphones are not working, so if you will speak up so everyone can hear you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Use my outside voice?
Yeah, sure.
Good evening. My name is Ernest Green and I'm the external affairs manager with Dominion Energy. He had been in this position, I mean, happy for 31 years in this job for the last 20. And so I've worked closely with staff over the years. Normally this group I have a coffee waiting for me, but yes, it's close. No, but this is wonderful. Appreciate the opportunity for us to come before you tonight and talk about the county line project and let you know exactly what's going on within. I have a team of people, Laura Wilson is the project manager for this particular project and is here for the presentation. A little bit better understanding of the project than any questions you might have. We have several of the members of our team here tonight with us to fill in where we need to be. While we do, that we have a turn to talk about solar and Greensville County. We've always had a great looking relationship when we're building up the power plant. The county's been very supportive of how we handle things and the ideas and the process. They work with us in this presentation we have for you tonight. So thank you for allowing us to be here. Introduce Laura Wilson. Thank you.
Some very large plans here.
Which ones?
The very, kind of unrealty, and just your class.
Are three of them the same?
They're, no, the, the top sheet is the overall plan and the one or two parts.
This set is the same as that?
Yes, these three of them, these are all the same. Is there any? You want to leave it for a little bit, but anyway. So then we, we won't get to that for a minute, but anyway. So Mr. Pope and Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the planning commission. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight to present our county line project. I know you give, you all know, I know you all know who Dominion Energy is. We'll just, I just wanted to go over a few facts for you. We serve over two and a half million customers in unwelcome Virginia. We have the second largest solar fleet in the U.S. That's among investor and utilities. We have experience in developing, constructing and operating utility scale projects. We have done this before. We support our communities where we operate with volunteer projects. Last year we volunteered over 100, excuse me, in 2019, we volunteered over 130,000 hours. We are proud longstanding partners with Greensville County. There are 1,600 megawatt Greensville Power Station, which employs 48 total employees. Plus, I'm sure there are many retirees and investors who live and work here in the county with you all. We have 1,984 customers in Greensville County. And as I said, probably some retirees and investors. So we are here, we are members of this community and we will continue to be members of this community. We will and will work with you all. So county line solar is what we're here to talk about tonight. County line solar will be an up to 86 megawatt project. It's located on timberland in the southwest portion of the county. It's along the Brunswick and Greensville County line. It's about two and a half miles north of the state line. The majority of the project is south of Macedonia Road and it is north of Barley Road. It's about a half mile from the southern tip down to Barley Road. Project is anticipated to come online in late 2027. POI, point of interconnection, will be on the Carson Wake 500 KV line, which is in Brunswick County, just over county line. And we will have to separately permit the switch yard with Brunswick County. We've talked to them about that. The project's total acreage is 2,188 acres, of which about 50 acres are still under negotiation, they're not yet optioned. So we are in active negotiations. Of that 2,188 acres, approximately 560 acres is the limit of disturbance or the LED. That includes the area inside the fence, any stormwater features outside the fence, the collection line easements and the roads outside the fence. The area under panels will actually be about 275 acres, that's of that 560. So what this means is that of the 2,188 acres, 1,600 acres will remain untouched, just as it is today. Current zoning for the project is A1 agricultural district. Current use is silviculture. As I mentioned, it's all timberland, has been silviculture for years. The proposed Greensville 2040 comp plan, it designates the future land use for this project, for the project area as rural residential conservation area. And the plan further notes that large scale economic development projects may be allowed in the rural residential area, subject to required land use approvals and approval by the board supervisors. So we will of course be filing an SUP and all necessary permits for the project. So you and the board will again have an opportunity to evaluate the specifics of the project. But the important point here is that projects such as county line are allowed in the rural residential designation. The surrounding area is a relatively remote area of the county. It's large tracts of undeveloped land. It's remote, it's low population density area of the county. As you can, can't, you can kind of see on here, but there aren't even many roads to access the property. So it's, it's very remote. And the property, the project's limit of disturbance at the southern end is over a mile from the town of Barley. Projects will, with the 1,600 acres that are untouched, there'll be ample open space for wildlife and layout will provide for wildlife quarters throughout the project area. Sorry, I'm going backwards again. Get it down. So what are the benefits of solar for localities? Like all solar projects, this project will bring many benefits. County line solar will bring clean energy to the grid for the use of all Dominion Energy customers, while delivering key benefits to this county and its residents. The project will provide increased revenues in the form of first revenue share. The county has adopted the revenue share ordinance and say by state statute, once operating, the project will need to pay $1,400 per megawatt per year. That escalates at 10% every five years. By the time the project is into operations, the first escalation will be in place. So the revenue share would actually be 1540 per year, per megawatt per year. Project also will provide increased property taxes. The land will be, once it is, if it is approved, the cup is approved, the SCP is approved, the land will be resumed from agricultural to industrial. And we've seen in Greensville County that that's up to a sevenfold increase in the value of the land and a commensurate increase in taxes. In addition, state statute requires that solar projects negotiate siting agreements. And this agreement can and will include a siting agreement payment to the county, which can be used for any capital needs and/or to reduce property taxes, as was recently done in Charlotte County. The payments are negotiated on a megawatt, on a per megawatt basis. Fountain Creek's agreement was for $1.5 million, which was recently paid to the county. That's $18,750 per megawatt. Recent payments to other counties have been in excess of $20,000 per megawatt. This revenue comes with the use of virtually no county services. We'll talk more, another slide about the project will help create clean energy jobs during construction and development and operations. Next if I do it right this time. Yes. So why are we here? The 2232 review. The, it's a statute code of Virginia 15 dot 2 dash 2232A. It requires that before a public utility facility may be constructed, established or authorized, the general location or approximate location, character and extent thereof must be submitted to the local planning commission. So the question before you is, is the location, character and extent thereof substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan? It's noted in the staff report that you're going to hear about later, I'm sure you can, you all have received. There are several key considerations in the comprehensive plan and guidance that are relevant to a review of county line solar project. First and probably foremost, the comprehensive plan sets the goals of preserving the rural character and agricultural characteristics of the county. The project needs this guidance as follows. As I mentioned, it's a relatively remote, low density population area of the county. There are very few neighbors. Existing perimeter timber tracts will remain and protect views from surrounding roads and properties. Any place where the forested buffer does not provide adequate screening, planted buffers will be added. And those plannings will include plants chosen for the greatest aesthetic and buffering value. You will hear in the report later, the staff report agrees that the use of these buffers with reasonable conditions imposed, the project can complement surrounding uses and limits any encroachment of otherwise conflicting land use on residential lands. Next, the next point there is that once constructed, the unmanned facility will not increase noise, emissions or traffic. Again, this project will preserve large tracts of land that could otherwise be sold for other development. One other point I wanted to bring up is that planners and communities typically view solar as an industrial use. You heard me mention it'll be resumed as such probably. However, a solar project like county line has very little in common with a consumptive industrial use. It will not need water or sewage, does not create emissions or noise. There is limited, if any, daily traffic. There's always a great deal of conversation and discussion about the amount of land used by solar projects. But as we've noted, of this 2,188 acres, county line solar has a very light actual footprint. Only 560 acres will be disturbed. And a solar project like county line can also provide opportunities for co-located agricultural uses that create valuable co-benefits. Agricultural takes as it is known is a growing field of co-locating solar and agriculture. Pollinator habitat can be deployed and that provides potential economic contribution to all agriculture in the area. The land under the solar arrays is planted with deep rooted ground cover that can rebuild the soil health. And finally, Dominion currently has sheep grazing for vegetative management on several of our solar sites, including the Sadler site here in Greensville County. We had some members of our team went out to see the sheep today. They're out there doing their thing and we have plans to expand this program. The staff report agrees that the project needs guidance and notes that the project is not detrimental to the surrounding area or the agricultural characteristics of the county. One last point at the end, the project's useful life, the infrastructure will be totally removed and the land restored in accordance of DECOMMISSION PLAN, which will be part of the SUP. I mentioned again that the comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows this area as rural residential and large economic development projects, including solar projects, are allowed in this area. The comp plan also encourages evaluation projects that will provide an economic benefit to the county. As I mentioned earlier, this project will certainly will. Besides the revenues that I mentioned earlier, which again were increase in taxes, revenue share, siting agreement payment. The project will provide practical, will use Virginia and locally based suppliers and labor. We already do that in the development phase, which is going on now, but during construction and operations. We plan to work very closely with the newly formed South Central Virginia Business Alliance, an alliance of local businesses that are providing goods and services and labor to solar projects in Virginia, south, southern Virginia. And they will help us source local trade services for the project. Solar projects like county line are, provide opportunities for local contractors, including grading, hauling, landscaping, fencing and supplies. And this would be a benefit to businesses in your area. Indirect benefits during construction include increased activity for the businesses in the area, including gas, convenience stores, general supplies, restaurants, hotels and others. And again, this all comes with the use of virtually no county resources, especially the high budget item of schools. Comprehensive plan also notes an interest in the development of environmental friendly energy. Solar energy meets this goal. It provides clean energy to the grid, it does not require water and does not create emissions. Project will protect wetlands and provides wildlife quarters. It requires no fuel transportation like other energy generators and it will help reduce the dependence on fossil fuels. So now we get to pull out your maps. This is the, the first page is an overall layout of the plan, of the county line plan. Couple of things to note, you'll see it's not one big continuous solar project, basically. Hot bits of solar panels that will be fenced individually. One of the benefits of those again is that it allows for wildlife to circulate around these panels. The yellow lines that you see, and you can see better maybe on the other, but these are the wildlife quarters. They may not be on all of your outlines. You can see to the north, cutting off the little section to the east most there, that's Macedonia Road, just for reference. And then you also have Coral Road running across the project to the north. And in the south, we have Hell's Island Road runs across the project. If you want to look at the, the second page, it's just the top half, so make it a little bit clearer there.
So it looks like you guys have a face map and you want like four in the first?
Yes, I have three in five, yep.
Yeah.
Three in the northern part and five in the southern parts. And, and actually, I mean, there's really kind of more than that because like here, you know, there's no, there's nothing no one wants and wildlife.
But it's, yeah. And the wetlands, they may be.
It's wetlands, yes, but, so it protects, fully protects all of the wetlands. And it's, and you can see it's fairly well set off from any of the roads. So in the northern half, as I mentioned, you've got Macedonia Road, Coral Road with three wildlife quarters. Only neighbor really is the Macedonia Baptist Church. We have been in contact with them and are meeting with them in December to discuss putting in place conditions that will make, you know, life fun, easy, it's better for them. We'll, we'll not work on, we won't have loud, we'll have loud work on Sundays allowed and we'll work with them on, if there's a funeral or something like that, they'll have a number to call and we'll make sure that there's not loud activity going on at that time, so. But we've yet to have that meeting to discuss all the conditions that will help them out to make sure we don't disturb their activities. We want to be a good neighbor. And then the southern portion of the project, as I mentioned, you've got Hell's Island Road that comes across five wildlife quarters down there. And for all of, for all of the roads, there's a minimum 100 foot vegetative buffer, which is the outside portion of the 150 foot mandatory setback. Anybody have any questions before I?
You were saying this parcel, or maybe, are you going to get, are we going to talk about the parcels that are located in Greensville and Brunswick? In getting to that?
I didn't really mention it, but here we are working with, with our surveys. We'll, we'll be able to distinguish and have the actual lines, you know. Probably, I don't know, it might end up being a wash because some of the parcels may have been paying taxes more to Brunswick than Greensville and, and vice versa, you know, so I think, I can't really predict how that's going to work.
No, I, I was, I was just saying like this parcel, 9514, and you were telling us what that acreage was. When you were telling us what that acreage is, I think on the first page, you know, in the notebook, is that total acreage on both sides or just, just the Greensville side?
I think, oh, I think what we included was just thoughts of the Greensville side.
Okay, yes. But like you said, you think, oh, right, right, I get that. You didn't, didn't get it exactly. That, that was one of my questions, because it's actually three parcels that cross.
I think you're right, this, this is the most spread out project I think we've encountered yet. Most have been more compact. And, and you haven't said, and, and I don't know, how far is it to the transmission line where you got to go here?
It was the last, oh, that's long.
Okay.
But it is, it is far, like if you're in Brunswick. So that's, I think that's Halifax Road that's in Brunswick. It runs into.
Macedonia.
It runs into Macedonia and the, that's Wilson Road area, yeah. But again, you think, over there, because you have your four wheel drive, but that's, that's the, the 500 kilovolt line just goes into Brunswick at that area. That's what I was saying.
I'm looking at it and I'm not seeing, is all of this timberland or is it somebody who bought your land in a first?
It's all timberland.
All of the timberland. These lighter places probably the timber's been cut, basically, is what I'm saying here. Cut off.
Yes, some of it has been cut there actually.
Can you see the power line too? I see.
Your, the parcel here that you mentioned that is still under, you're still negotiating, so that is not part of Rose Park land?
It's not.
It's not part of Rose Park, that's a local parcel.
It's a local land, I guess. And there are three acres and it's been, it's just been an effort to locate all three acres. it's just been an effort to locate all three acres on the same page.
What are the acres, is the, of the two parcels, you still deal with one of those an acre?
One of them's only an acre, yes.
And how big are?
And that's on Hell's Island Ridge. And then the other is just hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty.
Does that part miss the care family, like Alton's family?
Yeah. And we talked to them. And we're working, I mean, they have indicated now that they, I don't speak yet, but I think they are hoping to join the project, very much. Very happy, happy. So in conclusion, oh, I'll just do this, and then if you have any more questions, I like that.
Okay.
Just in conclusion, we just wanted to say that we feel like County Line Solar isn't substantially in accord with comprehensive plan as we have shown. It preserves the county's rural and agricultural character. It supports the goal of developing environmentally friendly energy. Now, plan states that as long as a solar energy facility is not detrimental to the surrounding area, solar energy facilities are encouraged in agricultural zone districts. And the project uses only a small portion of the county's total agricultural land. And has proposed setbacks and buffers which will provide protection for the adjacent.
Okay. Thank you. This is my question, so briefly.
Laura, I saw here, I was looking at, at the view shed, one of the view shed maps, and it said here that a timber preservation agreement, um, that you guys would submit that, you're submitting that to adjacent property owners prior, or if it gets approved, you would then submit, submit an agreement with the adjacent properties to preserve the timber on the line? Because I had never seen that before, and I thought, well.
And what, what that is talking about is we already have submitted to Roseburg, the boundaries that they need to preserve for buffers.
And they, right.
And it's out, they, they've been out there for a while till, yep.
For the entire life of the project, and they can't hide it, which I thought was wonderful, because they, that.
So it'll be natural, right? It's not gonna be as, as we've seen, planted landscapes just don't work that well sadly.
Right, well, you still see through them, and then there's been nothing to say that ten years down the road that they don't come back and cut, and you're saying, no, it needs to stay.
These are purchases from that will be landlands.
Right.
But Roseburg has been very cooperative, it permits all buffers that we need. They will not timber, they will reimburse them without timber that they make up, but, yeah.
For that, right. Right.
So in all places, if possible, we will leave just that naturalized, which stays, today is what she'll say.
And I'm assuming that at just one point is where we're going to get out power to the transmission line?
Yes, sir.
And that will be over here in line, I assume?
Um, most likely, but not, not determined, that could be an addition of the SUV. To be discussed, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give you the, your back?
Sure.
Okay, you're, 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 yes, Mr. President.
Sir.
Senator Wood.
Uh, yes, we will present the staff for current of the staff.
Good evening, my name is Michael Tannen, I'm the environmental programs director of the first group. Thank you, have it again. I'll try not to repeat too much of what was covered of the conference presentation, so. I'll try to focus on the ten of the twenty-two thirty-two review, which is obviously determining whether or not the project is in accord with the comprehensive plan, with the county's comprehensive plan. I did want to bring your attention to one typo, uh, under proposed development on page two of the staff report. It indicates that thirty acres would be within the project fence line, and that should actually be three hundred and sixty acres. So apologies for that. But generally, again, want to make sure that the project is in accord with the comprehensive plan. That's the charge for the planning commission this evening, and reviewing the twenty-two thirty-two. In our report on page three, we do pull out what we believe are relevant sections of the county's comprehensive plan. It certainly, Ms. Wilson alluded to these. Many of these general provide adequate additional services, including public, public utilities, I mean, the needs of citizens of the county. Coordinate development with the provision for public utilities and services. Preserve the rural character of the county by directing and controlling growth in designated areas. Encourage, under land use, encourage new development that complements surrounding uses. Concentrate development in appropriate locations by encouraging more efficient site design and incorporating proper buffers between different uses. Residential prevent the improvement of flipping land uses on existing viable neighborhoods. Commercial, industrial, evaluate large-scale industrial development projects that will provide, you know, benefits to the county, but that may not be a designated development area, just where near major transportation systems. Public facilities, plan accordingly for the future needs of the population. And under planning issues and strategies of the comprehensive plan, in respect to local production of renewable energy, there is great interest in the construction of solar energy farms throughout the county as a result of requests to generate environmentally friendly energy. Relevant strategies include that if not detrimental to the center of the area, solar energy projects greater than twenty megawatts are encouraged in agricultural zone districts. And it is encouraged that a deconditioning plan be provided by the owner of the facility to ensure proper development of the project. With respect to agricultural and forestal issues, there is concern to maintain the agricultural characteristics of the county, not included in urban services districts. And a strategy would be to reevaluate current development standards to ensure all areas comply within the rural development area, with the exception of major commercial hub, maintaining agricultural and rural development qualities. As discussed by Dominion, the conference plan describes, under the future land use map, this area as rural residential conservation areas, which are described as characterized by low-density residential development, such as detached, single-family units on lots larger than urban, urban lots. Certain agricultural and farming uses are typically allowed. In addition, large-scale economic development projects may be allowed subject to required land use approvals as approved by the supervisor, which we proceed to include utility scale solar facilities. So with that, we determined that there were several points for consideration by the planning commission. One, the county has issued five previous approvals of utility scale projects, and this will be, this application would be a sixth site, bring the total acreage up to fifty-three hundred acres, relative to the county's zoning ordinance limitation, that the maximum total acreage planned in the county to use for utility scale solar, we live at seven, six hundred acres. We are of the opinion that the proposed project is sufficiently cited to not detract from goals to preserve the rural character and agricultural characters of the county. Staff is of the opinion that the proposed development was designed and would use proper, property, property buffers and subject to reasonable conditions imposed on the eventual special use permit. The project can complement surrounding uses and limits any encouragement of otherwise conflicting land use on residential land uses. We are of the opinion that through the proposed site and design, and the imposition of reasonable conditions that the proposed project is not detrimental to the surrounding area or the agricultural characteristics of the county. And we are of the opinion that project subject to a special use permit and reasonable conditions is consistent with the future land use map designation of the project area's rural residential conservation areas. We would note, and this is at the bottom of page four, top of page five, that in accordance with the conference plan, it would be necessary for the applicant to provide a grading plan, maintenance, maintenance plan, as part of the concept plan, as well as a deconditioning plan. Information on security, traffic study, and construction schedule prior to further consideration of the special use permit application. We provided for you, again, considerations for, for the commission. And we've also provided three options, with the first being option one, finding that the applicant's proposal is substantial in accord with the comprehensive plan. Options for determining that that is not the case, as option two, and deferral as option three. Of having to answer any specific questions that you have about our perceptions about this application. We certainly expect that there would be more detail to do when we got to the session. I think there were a lot of few questions, a lot of left corridors, and certainly, the design of the project, it's significantly buffered, and it's inserted in the applicant's view sheds. I think they do a good job of controlling visibility of the project.
Thank you.
Any more, any questions?
Okay, thank you, thank you. Look, I saw, you know, back in here, there were some letters.
Yes, uh, it's a result of the adjacent property notifications. Uh, I think we received four letters since the agenda package was delivered to y'all last week. Uh, so we placed a copy of each person's has to those letters. I'll mention them right quick, just a second. Uh, I received one letter in support from Lane Dunn, an email, we have a copy of that. Sandra Town, Properties of Virginia submitted a letter of support. Colin Lewis is in favor of the project. And Chris Lindsay of Big Dog Lawn Care Services, uh, is in favor of the project. All four of these letters have been entered into the record, placed in the project file.
Okay. Okay, this is not a public hearing, but it's a large group here. And, and I would entertain if somebody wants to speak, just tell us briefly, if you're in favor of it. You know, we don't want it into a long discussion, but do that later at, at another hearing. But if anybody wants to just to voice their opinion briefly, come state your name and tell us why really quick. On up.
Mr. Chairman, planning commission members, friends and neighbors, my name is David Hi. I live on a farm on Triplet Road, which is called Bali Road when it crosses the Greensville County line. The County Line Solar Project will be less than one mile from the east side of my property. Rocky Run Solar Project joins my property. County Line Solar Project is just an extension of Rocky Run Solar Project into Greensville County. Just as the road going from Triplet to Bali has a different name in each county, it's also only one road. That's what we're dealing with here. County Line Project has more than twenty-one hundred acres in it, and over fifty-eight hundred acres that is in the Rocky Run Project. Now you're up to seventy, seventy-nine hundred acres, not available, anything else. No homes, no fostering, no farming. It's displacing wildlife, it's just dead land, is what this will be. Greensville County already has multiple solar farms. The big one north of the Dry Red Road, all over Green, on Pine Log Road, Fountain Creek Road, Fish Road, and it goes on and on and on, all the way to Skippers. South of the river and west of three oh one has a heavy concentration of them. You know this, you helped get them approved. First of all, why are the folks that live in this part of the county being targeted as the only ones in the county that is gonna have to sacrifice their communities for this so-called progress? Why aren't you spreading the burden around? If we look at the big picture, Dominion and other companies are constructing massive solar farms all over the region. Greensville County, Brunswick County, in North Carolina, it's Manhattan County, Halifax County, Warren County. If you fly over in an airplane, this region, you're gonna, where you cannot see county or state borders, this part of the world is getting inundated with these things. Why? Could it be that all of these are poor minority counties? Counties that are being subjected to an experiment that the outcome is not yet determined? What is gonna be the health impact of living around these massive solar farms? What is gonna happen to our drinking water? All of us around the County Line Project get our water from wells. Wells that would be replenished by the rains that the good Lord sends to us. But now acres and acres and acres of solar panels were had the raindrops splashing on them, running down them, continuing down to galvanized bike structures, carrying any heavy metals or other hazardous materials which may incidentally come from these panels. All of this to leach into the soil as it deteriorates. Going through conduits full of copper wires, these raindrops running across all of this and continuing through our water tank. Nature is an amazing thing and can filter lots from our water. But at what point do we overload the ecosystem that God created? Of course, Dominion has told us, they have studies to show it's okay, it's not a problem. There are also other studies out there that will have different results. Then that will provide you with any answer you want, if you search for it long enough. We've heard the term follow the science so much for the past three years. When science is full of questions, they can only be answered by what? Time. Asbestos was safe in the fifties, sixties, seventies, but by the late eighties, it would kill you, and we were spending millions of dollars to have me dressed in what looked like space suits, trying to safely remove it. DDT, planes, planes flew over homes everywhere, spraying to kill mosquitoes. Time has proved that it would cause cancer, and everyone's been exposed to it. It was not safe. Are we willing to bet the lives of our children, of ourselves, that everything with these massive projects will be okay? Or are we just expendable to the rest of the state and country and the world?
Okay, how much more is that?
Just, just a little bit. The fat cats in Richmond, Washington, New York, California, and Oregon will feel better in life that they are saving the planet, while our communities take all of the risks that, hey, it's probably gonna be okay. Lastly, if all the land gets destroyed, put in solar farms, where will we live, what will we eat, what will we wear, and where, and just say no to this project, please.
Ms. How, will you state your name, will you state your address for the record?
My address is twenty-seven seventy-seven Triplet Road, Lawrenceville, Virginia.
Okay. Anyone else have a more brief objection? You do, you want to speak, sir?
Yes, sir. I gotta leave my mask on.
Okay, you state your name quick.
Gerald Slager, eighteen thirty-two Macedonia Road. We own a home close out there, I'm the property owner of the one acre parcel. And this, I'm understanding, is contingent on the Rocky Run going through as well for the solar farm. But when both of them combined, they closed four unclose. We've run in that land for over forty years. There's at least two hundred, two hundred and fifty hunters that are gone. Every time we come up here, we spend a hundred, hundred and fifty dollars weekend in a local pop shop, and that's gonna be gone. They say they can produce a lot of folks for work. I've worked at a lot of these different solar farms, doing mechanic work for a different company. And it's nobody local that they got there, they bring a million per hundred pound. So I'm in a little disagreement with this project.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak briefly?
My name is David Moore. My address is five seven seven nine Vincent Road, Lawrenceville, Virginia. I live, I can throw a rock across the Greensville County land on what Hill Tower turned into, into, at the county land. This goes through and, uh, oh, the one on the Brunswick County side goes through, I saw a panel of equipment, a quarter mile of my hogs on both sides, and I just, I did it. Sixty-two year old, I'm living there, I'm like a born a rate bad. Sixty-two year old, I live down the line, born and raised there. I live in the country for a reason. I don't like looking at things like that and I like, I like looking at the waters, the falls. Oh, and also like he said, you know, I'm one of the hunt clubs that is going to shut down. White, pretty much all of my half, over half of my hunt land and that's one of my grandsons right there. Don't sound like a lot, a lot of people, but, oh. And the kids, they rather hunt and eat than they hungry and just the thought of, you know, not being organized hunt club no more, we got to go find some way to take them to the hunt, you know. That's the reason I can't do that and I'm out sold down the road out of my hogs on both sides. And I just ask mercifully I get y'all because, uh, I like, I mean, I know it, I know what they have against they, they say it's a state law, you know, that they got to go clean the energy. I don't see how you get no cleaner than produce energy now. And I've asked at a couple of different meetings, if somebody would supply me with a website that I can go to and get medical, health, death related issues by the way to reproduce energy now. And nobody's given me a website yet, but thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody want to speak in favor?
Hi, I hope everybody's doing well tonight. I'm Amy Lutz. I live at one thirteen Ashbury Court, Runegrad High School in Killamette, two seven eight seven oh. For those of you who don't know me, I pay taxes to Greenville County. Therefore, I'm very interested in what decisions are made that impact the county today and affect our future. I would very much like to see Greenville County be the number one best county in Virginia and it can happen. I am asking for the planning commission to pass the twenty-two thirty-two for the County Line of Solar Project. I attended a project community information meeting and received in good information on that's concerning the project. I think this is a good project for the county situated on timberland where much of the area is already bought from. It will bring in a considerable amount of tax revenues as well as citing agreement money, which the county greatly needs. There will be virtually no county services required and it is environmentally friendly, providing pollinator habitats, animal agriculture and specialized ground covers if needed. I support this project and ask you to vote for the twenty-two thirty-two and get on board the help Greenville County become the best county in the state. Thank you.
I think that. Anyone else? Any questions of anybody from the commission? I'm assuming, uh, this question is over.
No.
You have something to say? Are you ready to make a motion?
Um, well, I personally think this is an excellent project. Um, it's completely remote. I went out the other day to take a look at it. Um, you cannot even get, you know, to, uh, onto the north, um, south side of the project because there's no roads. And you've got to go down Hell's Island Road all the way to the end.
Right.
You've got to go down either Macedonia or Marley Road. Um, you know, it is, it, it, it's completely. Uh, it's, it's not affecting any, any homes in the area. Future land use is, you know, rural conservation area. We will not see anything else developed there in our lifetime. I quickly did the math last night when I was reading this. Um, I didn't even take into account, uh, you know, a citing agreement because I don't know what the citing agreement may or may not be, but if the citing agreement is in line with Fountain Creek's site agreement, you're looking at seven million dollars. I mean, that's just me doing, you know, a quick and dirty, um, estimate of what this brings. Um, I also think I was encouraged to see that they are going to partner with SBCC with their SHINE program. Um, also encouraged to see that they're moving the sheep into the Saddle Project. You know, and that helps again. Also, um, encouraged that they're a part of the Southern, um, Business Alliance, which any, any local business, whether it be in Brunswick, whether it be in Greenville, they haul rock and they, you know, mow grass, whatever it is that they do, they will turn to those lenders first. So I mean, I, I take a little bit issue with saying that it doesn't bring any money in, because it does. Um, they are committed to you to, to try to source it locally first before they go outside here. Uh, so those are those, these are the steps that Dominion goes above and beyond what's maybe a natural endeavor does. And, you know, Dominion has already committed, you know, lots of money here to the county. Um, through our other projects, so, um, I'm pleased with where it's signed it. They've indicated that they have been working with county, county staff. They have other projects that, you know, they could have tried to develop, but decided that this one was the most remote and had the least impact. Um, that's my discussion. I don't have any, you know, of course I could have specific questions, but we're not at that point yet. Uh, I, I feel like definitely needs our twenty-two thirty-two.
Well, thank you. Any other comments? My only comment would be about our own wish list. We've wanted it to be in a remote area.
Yeah.
We want it to be buffered. And we wanted less than a thousand acres and this comes in there of all the. Uh, I understand people who live close to it are passionate about it. Uh, probably the people who have land in it probably equally is passionate. Um, so there was. Any more comments? I'm assuming we're ready to vote. But can we have a motion one where they are? Well?
Are they ready? Is everybody ready?
I thought we were. I didn't know.
You are? Well, I make a motion that we approve the twenty-two thirty-two. I make a motion that we approve the twenty-two thirty-two for County Line Solar.
Okay. All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve this project. We need a second. We have a second. Any further discussion? Let's vote real gladly.
All right, Ms. Williams.
No, it is time.
I am?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
Ms. Orange Rhodes?
Yes.
Ms. Over?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Twenty-two thirty-two passed on a five to one vote.
Okay. Any other matters, Mr. Pope?
Well, I think I'll just make a statement for everybody's benefit in the audience. This does not mean the project is approved. It doesn't mean it is not approved. This just gives them, uh, the chance to go to the special use permit process. Uh, when they get to the special use permit process, there will be another scheduled public hearing here in the planning commission meeting. Then the planning commission will make their recommendation. There'll be another public hearing scheduled, the board supervisors meeting, where people can come voice their opposition or if they're in favor of it, they can, uh, come voice their opinion. So this, just all y'all think is approved, so it's, it's not.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Like nothing else? You have a motion to adjourn?
Not unless you have any questions to stay.
Both. Both.
Anything else?
Meeting next.
Motion to adjourn. You ready? Have a second.
Meeting next, huh?
Is that fact of that?
Yes.
I guess we have to adjourn.